I'd like to call the select board meeting of January 18th to order by roll call.
Kilcoyne, present.
Smith, present.
Grantson, present, sort of. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a heads up to anybody watching or listening, we will be moving into executive session after our town administrators' report, so it's a pretty short agenda for this evening. First, have you gentlemen had a chance to read the minutes?
I did that, and Chair and I called Connaught a couple of minor typos of staff. And, let me just check one more page. Perfect. As such, I move that we approve the minutes of the select board meeting of January 4th, 2023, as adjusted.
Seconded.
Okay, and just a note, the adjustments were all typos, they weren't anything of substance. But Mr. Kilcoyne has time now and picked up on all those typos.
Plus good vision.
Yeah, better vision.
That's what we have to bank board.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grantson, aye. All right, so this is our long awaited contract for our building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer. As you know, we're in a dual situation with Tony, with the town of Boylston, rather. And he's been very patient for the last, I don't know, year and a half, two years?
Yeah.
So Bill, you want to talk to us about this, or?
Sure. So, several months ago, gave them various different versions, they worked with their town council to get this. So the big thing is obviously that he's working about 20 hours each, each town, fuel alternate weeks, filling it up. Each town, right now, is providing a vehicle until we get to the point where we can get in one, and then just split the cost of that, but that'll obviously have to be budgeted. Town of Sterling pays the insurance, and they pay us 50%, health insurance incidental. We have the compensation, Boylston with their piece, Sterling with their piece. So this'll only go through this fiscal year, and by May, we have to let them know that we're going to do this again. That's about it.
John, you have any questions?
No, I mean, I read it pretty thoroughly today, because it's been so long since I looked at the first version, it looked very well done, I mean, I don't know why it took so long, but people have their reasons. But, as I asked Connaught this afternoon, I don't know why the code enforcement officer duties were a little, well, actually, they're the same, but why they just didn't use the same one for Boylston and Sterling, but I guess we all have our way of presenting things.
Yeah, that's their job description, and this is our, from our new job descriptions.
As was, there's, I don't know, they had more of a bullet presentation, maybe a little more, I don't know, detailed, but I mean, same thing, I read it, exactly the same thing. I didn't know that, just out of point of curiosity, that the zoning, the building inspector was the disability compliance coordinator, we don't have that language, and I didn't know who was that, I didn't know if that was you, Bill, if that was the facilities manager or what, but over in Boylston, they apparently, Tony's the disability compliance coordinator for physical facilities, so.
Yeah, Matt's our ADA coordinator here.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
He's been that for a while.
Oh, listen.
The ADA coordinator.
Oh, Tony?
No, Matt, Maro.
Oh, okay, so that's why it's not in there, my question is answered.
All right, then.
Good, thank you, thank you both.
It's not like we went without it.
No, I never, I didn't insinuate such a thing.
We'll get you around.
I'm, you know, I'm good, I'm glad it's signed, I'm sure Tony's glad it's signed, and it looked good, it looked like it could roll it right into next year as is, to be honest with you, so, that's good, too.
David?
So, just a little clarification on the vehicle. You currently, each town is going to supply a vehicle?
Yep.
And ultimately, we're going to have one shared?
That would be the, the hope, is using a, I don't know, seven or eight-year-old DPW vehicle from Boylston in the former fire department SUV for here. And he only uses ours really because it's four-wheel drive and the other one isn't.
And we will revisit this in May, again, so.
Get it up to the.
Long time waiting and a short period of time. So I would entertain a motion to approve this intermunicipal agreement between the town of Boylston, town of Sterling, for our shared building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grantson, aye. Okay.
Finally.
I know, it's really, it's been foolish, I'm embarrassed for us, but the next thing on our agenda is the scholarship disbursements, so Connaught's put together what we have for available funds from each entity, and as you can see, it's not a heck of a lot, so we just want to decide how you want to have them spent, you know, how many scholarships do you want to give out, and for how much. So you have the Rosamund Fanning Fund, which only has $284.99, the Buttrick School Fund is $922.83, Conant High School, $818.40, and the Yakabuchi, $350.18, and the Maria Houghton is at $2743.47. So, in the past, we've awarded, last year, we only awarded two, two 500, we didn't have a lot of applicants either, I think. I was getting there, Connaught.
Who's one of those?
I, Connaught, I'm hoping for Connaught.
Me, too.
All right, so, and the committee last year, if you'd like to take it, Connaught, and, I know Mr. Kilcoyne was part of it, and then we had Roy from the First Church, and that's two people that really need to be involved, well, you don't have to if you don't want to, but it'll be your last one.
I'll do, I'll be happy to do it.
So, I mean, I had looked at this and thought, you know, maybe we could go, take, do two out of the Maria Houghton, which would be, and do two 400, one, two 400 scholarships, and one out of Buttrick for 400, now we'd give us three 400 ones, but we can really configure it any way you gentlemen would like.
Yeah, I think I'd probably just leave the Fanning and Yakabuchi alone, I would think, this year, because it's the kind of loan out.
I think Fanning, Conant, and Yakabuchi.
Yeah, yeah.
Leave them alone, and just take out of that Buttrick.
Yeah.
But how many scholarships do you want to give, I mean, last year, you gave two, and there were two 500 ones. With only two applicants.
Right, that surprised me, I thought there'd be more, I think we should give at least 500, I was thinking two, 750, but with inflation and everything else, you know, although five is five, I mean, it pays expenses, so, you want to do three?
No, I was thinking four.
400, three, that's fine.
Three 400 ones.
We could do that. And you're saying two?
Or not.
Two for Maria Houghton, and one from Buttrick, right?
Yeah, what do you think, David?
Well, what if we set aside three with that money in mind, and we only get two, and just take that $1,200 and divide it up between the two individuals, if we don't get, you know, three applicants, just a thought.
We can do that, right, Con?
We can do whatever you want.
Really, whatever we want?
Whatever you want.
All right, I say scratch the scholarships, and we'll buy a membership to the Sterling Country Club.
Shut up.
It's for Billy.
Yeah, I think he's sorry.
I don't think that'd cover it, so, I would entertain a motion that we, okay, $400 from the Buttrick School, and $800 from the Maria Houghton Funds, to put towards scholarships for our students.
Yeah, and if there's only two applicants or one, we advance it to the two or one, how's that?
Okay.
Seconded.
Any further discussion, Mr. King, Mr. Mackey? Does it sound fair and equitable to the both of you, because that's important to me?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grantson, aye. All right, and moving on, we have our esteemed town administrator report.
Very well.
That's going to be part of it.
This is just the beginning, I'll get to the question stuff after. So we did receive the ADA grant, it's a reimbursable grant, so we don't get the money upfront, so a group of us have a meeting going Monday morning to see what we need to get rolling for the spring, there is a timeline on some of that money, the grant money, by the end of this fiscal year, or maybe the end of August, but pretty quick turnaround, so try to get those compliance things done as quickly as possible, get things lined up, and also what we need to do at the beach when it comes to trees or other things that, you know, need some work. But that's the, that's the beach update, did get a call from the Army Corps of Engineers, we had sent a letter back in the beginning of September, I guess they had had a lot of turnover in, in the planning office, which runs the Article 14 program, I guess it is pretty well subscribed, but they will eventually, hopefully fairly soon, see if this project, the Sweat Hill Hall Ave erosion, is an eligible project, if it is, then they can add us to the program, and eventually, you know, get something done, but at least get, get the ball rolling with them, and see if we are an eligible project, since we do have a lot of infrastructure that can be potentially destroyed, between the beach, the roadways, you know, have a possibility. We received a letter, I don't know, sometime over the weekend, from one of the folks on the garden club, they may be interested in providing a "Welcome to Sterling" sign on the campground roadside of town, there's one, been one that's not been there for a while.
Yeah, could destroy.
In the case that they do want to take up that cause, do we have any issue with them donating that?
Is it going to be similar to the one they already have down on the roadside?
I would imagine they haven't made a decision, but one of the members is going to propose that, so.
Okay.
I would, you know, at least, if it's a possibility, give them the okay to do it, if not, then.
There was a signage project by the, with the Economic Development Committee, I don't know if it's something that they want to look into, and, I mean, if we're going to change our signage, do we have them do something that's similar to what we already, or what was proposed, I don't know, and I don't know how far out that one is, is, I know we got, it's the Wayfinders, so, I don't know if it's something they want to look into at the same time. I don't have a problem with a welcome sign, we're a very welcoming community, except when it comes to business, we don't like business, apparently, just saying.
I'm good with the sign.
I'm fine with it.
And then the 1835 easements, we had sent a letter the other, last month, regarding the easements that are needed for the septic from the 1835 over to the area behind the fire station, we are okay with two of the houses or businesses that are there, we did not receive word from the third, which is fairly common, I understand, so, it, you know, the other option was, was to go through the eminent domain process for the easement, so if that pleases the board, I guess we can move forward with that, and I guess we have the ability to get the easement documents from town council for the two that are fine with, with moving forward with that. I know eminent domain things are not palatable, and I certainly don't like it, but.
No, but do they understand that this, when, it's just going to be a trench, and then it's going to be covered, and you're not even going to notice.
Two-inch white pads to get through back part of a yard that needs to, that can't be built on or anything, so.
Yeah.
And it's the easement, it's not actually taking the land.
Right, okay.
So I know two letters have been sent by, by the 1835 folks, we sent one, and I think the previous town administrator sent one in 2019, so, two ago.
You haven't heard back of them?
No, no. Yes.
And, and the chair of the 1835 stopped by to talk to them as well, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know what the, I mean, I don't see any, any.
You don't have another choice.
Alternatives, yeah, except to go forward, see what they say, but when you're not communicating, I mean, you don't leave us any choice, you know, so, yeah, see what happens along the way, but I mean, there's no, it's very miniscule, it's not even, an invasion of property when you think about this.
1,500 square feet of, of easement space.
Yeah.
1,600, maybe.
Well, maybe they'll contact us when they get the more formal letter, I don't know.
Hopefully, I'd rather work with them than, you know, force something, but.
Well, exactly, so if they do, that'll work.
David?
Yeah, I agree, we need to move forward, it's unfortunate they haven't had communication with us.
Again, it's a project that's been on the table for a very long time, and, you know, we've put a lot of revenue into that building, and really, uses are limited until you actually have that septic system in place.
And functional.
And, Joe's going to give them money, too, so, we're all set.
There's, money already been approved.
That's right.
It's, whether, we don't know, we can't get a quote till we know exactly what we have to do or not, so.
Yeah, no, I think you have to take the next step.
And then the budget update, I think I gave you, you know, the capital things back in December, finance committee and capital committees have taken a look, we are going to have, is it next week, week after?
Yeah.
The 31st and the second meetings with the departments, the bigger departments, regarding their budgets and capital items.
And we're having them in this room, and we are televising it on SLCT as well, per your, prior request.
Yeah. Yeah.
The more we can get out there, Joe, the better when we get to town meeting.
Yeah, we, we had a, a problem, and Bill helped us shuffle it around, where we didn't have this room for one of the two meetings, so we moved the meeting to an alternate date, which is now compliant, we can get this room on both.
Don't they know who you are?
It was us and the planning board, so.
They get their own room.
We received the budget requests, so the guidance was to make things a 3% COLA, obviously, the board hasn't decided that, but I would rather have the high end of things and go backwards than, you know, go upward, and also try and keep within about a 1.5% expense side, some were able to do that, some not, obviously, those that have their own building, SMLDs going up on their rates, and, so there's certain things that you can't really do a whole heck of a lot with, so we have them there, those were two of the assumptions, so we'll be working our way through these in the next, you know, month or so, but with the departments, we'll start looking at them next, yeah, the 31st and the second.
Then we have a follow-up meeting on Feb. 7, to discuss the easements.
And the big thing, insurance and benefits, we do not have that number in there, but we know that we'll probably be at the cap for the insurance side, if you're looking at the town side, everything else is pretty much in there, we have nothing from either of the school districts that we participate in, Wachusett or Monty Tech, so I have placeholder numbers in there, but they are.
Still have nothing?
Still have nothing, so, those are big, big numbers, and that could be problematic for the overall budget, the school numbers.
Do, do you, do they have an ETA as far as the school budget, or?
The Wachusett side, no, one of the other problems, and I think it's the 24th, the House and Senate, and new governor are going to be meeting for their consensus revenue side of things, to see if they can actually get the idea of where to start, a new governor gets an additional four or five weeks, since they're just starting when they get into office, the beginning of January, unlike a sitting governor, which pushes back any kind of revenue thing, idea for us, so, it's going to be pushed out a little bit, I know that the governor's budget, the new governor's budget has to be in by March 1st, by law, a sitting governor has much less time, but they're also there the entire time, a year or so, we will see, but we're going off on our side, the revenue numbers from this current year, statewide, state, state numbers, so, it's, I'm fairly comfortable with the town side numbers.
Yeah.
And also, with the compensation study not being done until after the beginning of this fiscal year, there is addition, more than 3% changes, because people had to get to the nearest step, and if there were any changes, so, there's, some, some line items are going to be more than a 3%.
All right, and then we will have them in, I, we haven't even met the new superintendent, so I'd like to see him.
I know they want to come to the finance, or maybe we have a joint meeting or something.
But even, even before the finance, you know, and.
No, I'd have them see both.
Yeah, so, yeah, before he comes in with their numbers, so we can be nice to him at first, you know, and then beat him up when he comes in with his numbers. The other, the other thing is if we could, have you been in touch at all with Monty Tech?
I, we met the superintendent, he's also new, so, two new superintendents in both of our districts, and a lot of new town administrators in both of the districts.
Yeah.
I have not spoken to them on the budget side of things.
All right, well, if you.
Theirs is significantly smaller, so.
It is significantly smaller, but they also come in significantly later.
Yes.
You know, they're, they're like, they're beyond. On last call, so, you know, maybe reach out to them and just say, you know, how soon can we expect something from them? I think Joe would appreciate it, and Chris, and the rest of the finance committee, maybe?
Yeah, it helps a lot to have all, all the preliminary numbers in.
Yeah, I mean, we know that none of them are set in stone at this point, but at least, I mean, you have a general idea.
Yeah, Monty Tech was 3.91 years a year, I have four in there now, so, if it's roughly the same, we're pretty close.
Yeah, it's a lot more than 0.9%, so. Okay, anything else?
Unless you have any individual questions on things.
John?
Uh, no, I mean, I just, I mean, the comments is, I mean, it's preliminary, but, you know, I see the audit expense went up, which led me to question, I mean, I can't remember if we have a three-year contract with Roselli, is it year-to-year now, and?
Year-to-year.
I'm not saying that the darn account is not worth it, but, and that's 21 grand, 21.5 is not unreasonable, I don't think, for a town our size, but what is the status, I mean, the audit usually, we usually start to hear something on that right about now.
They're here this week.
They're doing it right now.
Oh, good, okay.
Those stranger people that you see walking around the building.
I was wondering who's someone I wanted to say, why do we hire all these new people?
No.
No, but I think, I, I think the only thing I was going to say was, if you give me two minutes, if it's okay, and it ties into this thing, and we're going to executive session soon.
All right, go.
All right, I, I know we've, the tax bills have gone out, and everybody, you know, has probably been, had a little sticker shock, and I had, I asked Bill to get me some numbers, and this won't take long, but he's much better at, at researching this stuff than I am, and, you know, I looked at my own bill, because my assessment went up, but just so people know out there, what's, why the bills change, and why they increase sometimes, but in the last five years, going back to 2019, the tax rate was $17.27 per thousand, in 2020 was $16.81, $16.52, $15.25, and this coming year, it's going to be $14.32, every year, it's fallen. Also, in the past five years, the average tax bill in Sterling has been, average single-family tax bill has been $59.16, $61.06, $62.41, $62.59, that was a whopping $11 increase a year ago, and this year, it's going to be a 6% increase. Now, and all, all you have to do is look at the average family assessments going back, I'm not going to read those numbers, but they go from $342,000 up to $465,000 for the coming year, 2023, so, you know, the, the average family tax bill in Sterling for the last four years have been 3%, 2%, 0%, and 6% coming forward, and with that, the reason for that is, when in simple words, called inflation, because inflation has factored itself into the assessments, the average family tax bill, what these houses are selling for is what your assessment, why your assessment, in most cases, has gone up, so, when you get all this data, I mean, and, another thing, in looking at the budget, this budget right now is just over 3%, it's going to change, we put in place, so, Bill has put in placeholders for Monty Tech and Wachusett, somewhat high, and hopefully, they come in a little less, but I think it's been managed really well, the, the operational budget under not just Joe, but his predecessors, Everett and Joe Solva, and I think it really, where they shoot for 3%, including a COLA, and that's not what's really jacking this, the tax bills up, so, you know, and that's compared to like Stowe, where the average tax bill is $11,617, on average family value of $640,000, and Templeton on the other side, $4,136, on average family value of $320,000, and at the end of the day, I thought it was pretty good, the, where does that put us, I think we have above services across the board in this town, and the ranking out of 351 cities and towns, we're at 100, as of last year, they don't have it for 2023 yet, we're at 144, so we're almost right in the middle, maybe a little bit above the middle on that, so, we're not, we're not anywhere near, Stowe happens to be 34 in the Commonwealth, Templeton 297, so we're pretty comfortably in the middle, and I think our services are better than average, I, I really believe that in the last, since I've lived here, so, it's, I know it's not nice to pay higher taxes, but again, this is what inflation does, it affects all of us, and we're, we're paying for it, we're going, not just here, the gas pump everywhere else, that's my spiel, and I thank Bill for getting me the data he did, and now with Joe with this stuff, the regular budget, it all kind of fits in, I think, so, there you have it.
Anybody interested in that data, too, I mean, you can post that on the select board's page, actually, and they can look at it, because I thought that was pretty interesting, too, because I do, I do know that some people were grousing about their tax bills, but. David, any questions, answers?
No, I just, I concur with, with John, and the level of service that the town provides, it comes with a cost, unfortunately, and the costs aren't going down.
Costs aren't, nothing is going down, but, you know what, yeah, no comment. All right, so, the other thing that we would want people to know is that the warrant is open, at this point in the game, you know, so any of your, your requests need to get into us sooner rather than later, and then, I had a question, Bill, did we send a letter, a support for Stephen to the MRPC for the D L T A?
Yeah, we signed and sent that off.
Okay, just wanted to check that out, and then, the other thing is, our nomination papers are now available also, they're available right up until March 16th, and then they're due on March 20th by 5 o'clock, so anybody interested in running for a elected board? Have at it, come see the town clerk, yes, we know, Mr. Kilcoyne, you're not coming back.
I'll answer any questions, help on any lead account.
There you go, all right, and then, just one announcement, for those who don't know, our facilities manager, Patrice, has moved on to another job, closer to home, so, we thank her for her past service, and wish her well.
And the position has been posted.
And the position is posted, for anybody that's looking for a facilities manager, you take seven or eight buildings, and oversee those, and just about everything, but the position's open, you can send your applications, resumes right to Mr. Caldwell, or come and talk to him. him. All right, so now, unless anybody else, Mr. Mackey, you have anything to add to this? Mr. King?
I'll discuss the meeting, upcoming meetings, so I think we're.
Well, we kind of did that on our own, so why don't you do it, do it, focus is on you.
Okay, all right. Upcoming, we have on January 24th, we're, we're holding a joint FinCom and C B C meeting. We're holding it in this room. That's to discuss the budgets that we've just received from Bill and Fred.
What time are you, Joe? 6:30?
6:30. Every one of our meetings is going to be at the normal 6:30 time, John. Following that, we have a January 31 meeting set up, also 6:30 in this room, to be recorded by SLCT. And that'll be Department Grouping 1 that will come in and we'll have a discussion with them about the budget submittals that they've made on that. Following that, on February 2nd, we're also meeting in this room with SLCT, televising it, starting at 6:30 PM with Department Grouping 2. Out of those meetings, FinCom and C B C will go through any questions we have about the omnibus budget that has been submitted or any of the capital issues that were previously submitted and are still open. We'll have the committees there that have submitted the capital to review those as well. Following those two meetings, we have a wrap-up where we get back together as a joint FinCom and C B C on February 7th, also in this room, also will be televised at, starting at 6:30. And we'll work the time between February 2nd and 7th offline as a committee to form our questions and get back together on the 7th to tender any issues that we have. So that's the upcoming agenda, it's a pretty busy agenda.
So 1/24, 1/27, it's February 2nd and February 7th?
1/24, January 31, February 2nd, February 7th. Those are all calendared on the town.
They're already on the calendar.
Okay, the last two are televised?
They're all televised.
All of them will be televised. I asked, I asked Valerie to set it up with SLCT on all four of the meetings.
Yes, Richard?
If anyone in the audience is interested in being a volunteer for SLCT to function as an assistant in televising any of our government meetings, we're short one person and we really need some more volunteers. If you're interested, you can contact SLCT or.
Stop in their office?
Yeah, or, or my office, thank you.
Good point, thank you, Richard.
So, that's the upcoming group of meetings.
And they are all, all already on the calendar.
Okay, they just didn't have it finally, that's good.
Yeah, okay. So, anything else from you, comma?
No.
All right. Anything from you, David?
Good.
All right, so with all that being said, we are going to go into, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session and to return only to adjourn.
Make the motion, we go into executive session for, under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, reasons free to discuss, to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining for fire and dispatch.
Seconded.
All of us in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. Get.